I'd like to call this meeting to order. All Upper Dolphin Area School Board District Board meetings will be electronically recorded and that recording will be used in part to create the minutes.
The condition of the Upper Dolphin Area School District is to empower our students to be lifelong learners in order to reach their greatest potential.
Would you all please rise to the Pledge of the Flag in a brief moment of silence? To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Ms. Bateman, roll call for Upper Dolphin, please.
David Barter.
Here.
Price Puppington.
Here.
Mills Yure.
Here.
Brian Henninger.
Here.
Jack Loslinger.
Catherine Tallmell.
Steven Welker.
Kirk Wunrick.
Heather William Reed.
Here.
Six present three absent.
Ms. Wees, a roll call for Millersburg, please.
Mr. Eilston.
Here.
Mr. Enders.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Cant.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Longo.
Here.
Mr. Minnick.
Here.
Thank you. Let me just start off, thank you for everyone for coming this evening. Millersburg Board members, thank you very much for coming. Upper Dolphin Board members, thank you. The number one item on discussion tonight is the UDA Board members would like an opportunity to individually share the reasons for voting not to pursue Option Five of the merger feasibility That pretty much summarizes why we're here tonight. At the March fifteenth vote meeting, when the Upper Dolphin, when we voted to not continue the merge option number five, I'll take responsibility, it was a misunderstanding, assumption that our board members did not prepare a comment. The board comment session, section that was in the agenda, I assumed was for response to the public, not for our board members to comment. So, we wanted to, after the merger, explain to the Millersburg Board members' public and also the Upper Dolphin area public, why we voted no. So, at this time, I asked my fellow board members of Upper Dolphin to make that statement, to explain why they individually both voted the way they did. However, this is a discussion. If you do have questions, comments, for Millersburg Board members and Upper Dolphin Board members, please feel free to ask questions. Okay? So with that being said, I'll turn over the floor to whichever board member of Upper Dolphin would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Price. I'm Mills Yure, and I want everybody, this is the most people I've seen in a board meeting in a long time. I want everybody to know that I was very enthusiastic about the onset of a merger with Millersburg. But as, as the situation developed, and I'm sure my fellow board members will provide you with some detail of that, my opinion of that started to wane and then it became pretty solid. This is a no-brainer, we don't want to do this. So, at the first public meeting, Millersburg was very, very impassioned about, about their elementary and wanting it to stay in a big part of the community. Other events that took place, which we'll enumerate, pretty much solidified my, my vote of no, but I want you to hold the thought of how important elementary school is to you guys. Dave?
My name's Dave Barter, and I was Board President when this started with Mr. Williams, and I also was very optimistic about the merger. When we did the co-op for sports, we did it because we had need. You know, when a football player gets hurt and you don't have anybody to back up, you know, that's, that's pretty hard to compete. You know, so we came together to increase our numbers, to be competitive. Our curriculum is somewhere along the same line. We have a diverse curriculum, and when our employees are, and benefits are basically eighty percent, I'm not quite sure of these numbers, eighty percent of our budget, we only have five kids in a calculus class, that's not too efficient. Okay, so, in the same way of sports, to increase numbers in our curriculum allows us to give two AP English classes, one in the morning, one in the evening, or in the afternoon, which allows a diverse curriculum to stay healthy. Okay, so, as declining enrollment is only going to get worse, and the need to increase the numbers to keep a diverse curriculum healthy is, is a big plus for me. As time went on, our taxes at Upper Dolphin are affected about six hundred dollars per hundred thousand. Okay, so, Upper Dolphin was going to take a hit in taxes in the merger, or a variation of that. Our bargaining units are a couple thousand per employee apart, and I'm sure Millersburg's faculty would not negotiate down to, to us. Okay, so, we were going to take a financial hit there, all right? As time went on slowly, it got harder to justify the merger financially, but I was still in favor of the merger at that point, because it's, it's the best for our students. We do have obligations to our taxpayers, but I feel strongly what's best for our students is, is higher on my list. Okay, so, I was in attendance at all the public meetings, and there was a lot of passion for the K-8 in Millersburg, many of the close-knit elementary faculty, as well as little or no busing for the K-8 in Millersburg, so there was a lot of passion to keep it there. The PEL, on all scenarios, Langerville was going to close, and high school was coming here, on all scenarios, okay? What actually changed my vote to a nay, was that there was another way to successfully merge, and for our district not to take a financial beating in the process. You know, when you look at the taxes, the bargaining units, and, and even at the point, there was a lot of people that were asking me, and I said, "We're going to take a financial hit, but in the long run, it's better for our students." Well, that only goes so far, and, and when the financial starts adding up and adding up, and I says, "Wow." Okay, so, so it changed my vote because there's another way. And the, the option that's on the table allows K-8 to be in Millersburg. It still has the high school coming to Upper Dolphin. So, the K-8 in Millersburg with, with little or no busing, and Upper Dolphin taking on the high school students, it's a, it's a win-win, and it is more financially feasible for both districts to, to make this, make this happen. I proposed, the proposed scenario does accomplish all of the things I mentioned, and it's like us dipping our toe in the water before we jump in. I'm, I'm not opposed to this merger, I still think it's the very best for our kids. It's just that the financial differences at this point is a hard pill to swallow, but if, if we take the option that we're going, proposing, I think we can fin, finish this merger if we, if we work together to align our taxes, as well as our bargaining unit, and in-service together to align our curriculum over, over the course of four or five years, we can finish this merger with no hiccups. I mean, yes, our boards will work together, our in-services would be together, our curriculum would match, our, our taxes would be more in line with one another, our bargaining units would be more in line with one another, and we can finish this merger. I just, I'm, I, I still feel that it's the best way to go, but at this point, the financial hit that we take, but I still feel it's, it's best for our students to go down this road, and it's going to take a lot of work with both boards. You know, we keep our, our separate district, and if, if we're four or five years down the road, you can still go back to the elementary school, redo the elementary school, and, and go our separate ways, but I, I really think that as the numbers slowly decrease, it's hard to keep a diverse curriculum, and it's hard to be efficient when, when you're only four or five kids in a class, and you're still paying that teacher that you could have sixteen kids in a class. So, financially, it's a win, and I think the way it's proposed that both, both districts would save money. You know, so, it, it's, I'm, like I said, I was very optimistic at the start, and, and for the same reason, to bring our sports together, to generate numbers, to compete. We're just doing that academically, and, and, you know, our, to get our curriculum to survive, the numbers make it a lot easier. So, thank you.
I'm Steve Welker. First off, again, thank you for all coming tonight for this follow-up meeting to our merger vote back in March. My message might be a little bit long here, but this merger process was equally long, and I wanted to accurately describe my point of view as a UDA Board member. A little over three months ago, we voted on the merger option five as presented by PL, and the UDA Board unanimously voted this down. During that meeting, on March fifteenth, there was a time for board comment, but myself and the rest of the board, as Price said, we were not aware of this opportunity prior to sitting down that night in an auditorium. Therefore, I didn't have anything prepared to say that I felt was worthwhile. I was prepared to answer public questions at that time, but there were none, but I did not feel I could have shot from the hip and spoke well enough to what my vote was going to be, which at that point in my mind, I knew I was voting no. I did not also feel it was right to use this platform to sway any other votes of my board. I trusted that our board was well-informed on the matter, and I would vote what was, and they would vote what was best for UDA School District. I do strongly feel that our local representatives, Millersburg School Board, all the teachers, administration staff, students, parents, taxpayers, they deserve to hear the reasons why I voted no to this merger, and this is why I prepared this tonight. I've heard some people think this process was a waste of time and money because of the outcome. Others may feel that UDA drug this process long, and we were going to vote no all along. Still, others may say we were cowards for not speaking publicly before the vote, or that we were not well-informed, and these were the reasons why we did not speak, or we all voted no. I'm speaking tonight to say all these are not true, from my perspective. The reason it ended up as unanimous no vote from UDA is we had a very informed board, and that we voted what we felt was best interest of UDA at the time. This was a very educational process, and I do not think it was a waste of time or money, as not only did it make it very evident to UDA that a full merger as laid out in Option Five was not the way to go at the time, it got us thinking in regards to what other ways can we enhance this partnership with our neighbors, with or without, with or without the full merger, Option Five being a viable option. To give a little backstory on this merger, throughout the sports co-op, I heard numerous discussions, "Why don't we just merge?" And really, that's what started it off for me also, is why I started thinking about, "Yeah, this might be a good idea." From the beginning, I was very on board with this idea of a merged district. I, I knew the possibility was there to, to give a continuation of solid educational offerings, you know, at a reasonable tax rate to our residents. And that became my primary reason of looking for this, that long-term financial offerings that this could bring out. I did not, I didn't really think it was going to give us a big gain educationally, because we already had a broad educational offering. I knew we had a lower tax rate, so I didn't think really our taxes were going to get lowered. It was mainly that long-term financial viability that I was looking for out of this possible merger. So I was very realistic going into this process, thinking that at best, we could maybe, instead of increasing taxes every two to three years, we could maybe stretch that out to every four to five years, and still maintain the same offerings. Well, we got, went through Phase One study, and that opened up a ton of info. Personally, I don't think PL's projections of doom and gloom, that showed both of our districts failing in a number of years, were very accurate. I think that was a little enhanced, the try to push the merger ahead, but taking that aside, and, and taking all that info with a grain of salt, I really dove into all the other information. And what I got out of it is, made me realize, UDA is really a pretty good district, in pretty good shape for the small district we are. Our buildings were in good shape, we had moderate tax increases, we pay our teachers a fair salary, we have a very good class offerings, academic, honors, dual enrollment, vocational offerings. All of these things I've known, I've been part of UDA as a student, parent, coach, board member for years, I've knew, knew all these, but seeing them in one document really drove it home, that, "Hey, we are in pretty good shape as a district." So even at that end of Phase One, I was still very on board that, "Hey, we're in good shape, this could only get better, merging together." Next came the preparation of Phase Two, and by this point, I was now on the board as, as Vice President, and a little bit more in the development of, of the studies. One thing that we suggested as Upper Dolphin is to actually look at a tax decrease for Upper Dolphin residents. We felt this would be a little bit of a feather in your hat, so to say, that we could maybe sell it to the Upper Dolphin public a little better. When the initial preliminary draft of Phase Two came back with a tax reduction for Upper Dolphin residents, and a PL's shot at a merged collective bargaining agreement, it didn't look very good. If I remember correctly, it was like a million dollars in the hole, year one. And we said, "Wow, we can't sell that to our public, there's no way." So we went back and said, "Do it with, at Upper Dolphin's tax level, and figure out a best-case scenario for the collective bargaining agreement," which was taking the average teacher salary as it is today, instead of taking a guess as to what that bargaining agreement would be. So, even at this point, when we directed PL to go back to the drawing board, so to say, to finish out Phase Two, I was still very optimistic that, without taking away that tax reduction, which I really didn't think we were going to get, and using the best-case scenario on teacher salaries, they were going to come back with a good year-one solid financial gain for us that would transfer out into the future. You know, then, when Phase Two came out, this is where the wheels really fell off for me. I knew at this point, the merger was basing on some best-case scenarios, which we had instructed PL to do that, and it only showed a small positive budget projection that year one. The big unknown here at this point was still the total number of staff. PL was suggesting an elimination of twenty-eight teachers and twelve other staff and administration. That was just a recommendation, and we really didn't know what the curriculum was going to be, joined. Not only was that a recommendation, a big unknown, the other unknown was what a combined CBA was going to look like. We, we instructed them to do base case scenario, but even a moderate increase, like a one-and-a-half percent increase, really threw those numbers way bad, from being a, a small positive initially to a big negative. So really, at this point, there was just so unknowns, so many unknowns, unknown collective bargaining agreement, unknown number of teachers, unknown curriculum, unknown one-time costs, that we really couldn't vote solidly yes at this time, and we kind of instructed PL, not PL, we instructed our administration to really take a close look at the curriculum, because the curriculum defined the number of teachers, and when, once we could define the number of teachers, we could get a better budget estimate. So, even, I was still even fairly positive at this time that they could come back, I mean, again, I said, "This is where the wheels started to fall off for me," but I was still positive and still voted yes to go forward. But at this point, I could kind of equate where we were at to like buying a new, if you'd equate it to buying a new car, we knew what options were available, but we had yet to see the base sticker price, which were your one-time costs. We did not decide on what options we were even looking to buy at that time, which was our curriculum and number of teachers. And we didn't even know the long-term operational costs. You know, what was that five-year projection, which, in hindsight, I really feel bad that I did not push PL to provide a five-year projection. They projected us out as individual districts five years into the future, but they never gave us a five-year projection as a combined district. They only gave us year one. So, with our administration instructed to go back and decide a curriculum, this was going to determine at least those initial, initial costs of how many teachers we were going to have based on our current collective bargaining agreements, and kind of that we could project forward into that five years. At this time, we weren't really looking into the one-time costs, and I know the state was pledging that they could help us out with those one-time costs, but really, if we couldn't afford going forward, the one-time costs didn't matter. You know, it's like, if somebody's going to give you a Ferrari, or you have the money to buy a Ferrari, but you can't maintain it, there's no use to keep it. So we really needed to look going forward, could we maintain it, even if the state was going to give us that money. Our administration did a great job and came back with a good combined curriculum, and the teacher count that was required to offer those courses. Where PL said we could eliminate twenty-eight teachers, our own administration came back and said it was only going to be twenty-two. That difference in six teachers took our slight budget positive that first year, and made it almost a exact break-even at a forty-two thousand dollar surplus, so basically break-even. That really is where the wheels totally fell off for me, that if we were going into this year one, basically break-even, and we really weren't getting much more class offerings for Upper Dolphin than we, what we already have, and we still had that unknown, at that break-even point, the unknown was still what the collective bargaining agreement was going to be, and it wasn't going to be better. It was going to either be what we averaged off, or worse, because no teacher was going to go backwards through this merger. Looking at it a little closer, if you took that modest one-and-a-half percent jump, say we could have negotiated a new bargaining agreement for a one-and-a-half percent jump, year one was then a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar deficit, and it went down from there. So, at this point, with a vote looming, I knew myself I was going to be a no pretty surely, but I wanted to take a deeper dive and to be sure myself. And I can say our administration really helped us out in this. We've talked, we talked to our main legal counsel about board configurations, and, and about what, what things we should have decided or left, that they aren't left up in the air prior to voting. We also talked to our legal counsel that we use to negotiate our CBA, what possibly could a new collective bargaining agreement look like, you know, and how is that in relation to what we currently have? We also talked to our accountant that audits our books for years, and asked his opinion on financial projections. All three of these individuals that we brought in and talked to, all cautioned us that this merger option five was maybe not in the best interest of Upper Dolphin. I also personally dug into a lot of other mergers. I read the whole Antietam-Xeter merger case study, and where they ended up, and looked up every article that the newspapers ran on it, why that vote went no, and what, what came out of it. Probably the biggest statement I heard when we had those different people in talking to us, that really hit home for me, one of those individuals said, "Why did you expect anything drastically better? Merge, you're still a small district, and combined, you're a small district that would be taking on a larger debt load with an additional facility to maintain, and there's really no economies of scale, because you're really the same scale. We're still a small district together. You're not really changing the model." That's when it really hit home to me, that it was really no different than we were as Upper Dolphin alone. And then at that point, I also, on my own, took PL's numbers of their income projections and their expenditure projections, and I pushed it out the five years, to see what it would be. And in five years, we were sitting at a worse spot as a merged district than we were Upper Dolphin alone, using PL's numbers. So, at this point... So at this point, what the benefits weren't really outweighing the negatives. There were benefits for Upper Dauphin in this. Don't get me wrong, there were benefits, but there were more negatives and more risks that could have drove us backwards. So just in closing here, I want to lay out a couple of those benefits that I seen and the negatives, just so you can kind of put me, put yourself in my shoes and see why I voted no. One of the positives I seen was six to eight additional class offerings in the high school. You know, increasing opportunities for our students to broaden their education is always desirable. However, a full merger is not necessarily needed to do this. We already have Millersburg students attending UDA to take classes that are not offered at Millersburg's. You know, we could look to expand that, and that's exactly what Antietam and Exeter ended up doing. They have their students can go freely one direction or the other to take classes that are not offered in the other location. Another positive was the increased chance to get classes you want in the high school. You know, with a small high school student population, most elective courses and many core courses are only offered once a day. If two classes a student wishes to take at the same time, he can't take both classes. So with a larger student body, many of those classes might be offered multiple times a day, and there's electives multiple times a day. You can then maybe customize your schedule to fit much better. This was the main benefit of combining student population, in my opinion, and it's still a benefit, in my opinion. Just as Mr. Barter spoke, having a larger number makes, you can easily justify to have that class. Another positive, that common high school student body really simplifies the combined athletics. I'm dedicated to having the athletes stay together. We can't exist as our own athletically, we just don't have the numbers. But logistically, having two high schools with two separate sports teams, it's hard. I mean, you have kids going both day, both ways for busing, and I know personally of some kids that have stepped away from sports because it just did not work for them having to go to that other high school to be able to compete. And I think it's on both sides that has happened. Also, the other positive was we were gaining additional athletic facilities. With option five, the Millersburg football field and track would have been open for junior high football or junior high soccer or even a possibility of a junior high track team, which all I think is great to open up more opportunities for those young kids. Having all our high school sports at one location gives all that extra space for the younger kids to use. Also, additional gym space, as you probably all know, gym space is at a premium for open rooms and club teams and everything like that. Having those additional gyms would have made it a lot better. The next two were kind of positives, but they could have went either way. Increasing our tax base by over 70% coming together, but it's kind of a false positive. Getting 70% additional revenue would be great for UDA if the revenue was not being outpaced by the costs as what PL was suggesting. The way they showed that our costs were going to be still outpacing our revenue, it doesn't really matter what your tax base is. If your costs are greater than the money you're bringing in, you're still going backwards. And sometimes with a larger budget, you go backwards even quicker. And the increased fund balance, also, this may or may not have ended up as a positive. A large fund balance is a good thing to have to ride out some bumps, but it's not really intended to bridge a gap year after year after year on a budget gap. I mean, it is the taxpayers' money and it should go to be paying for what we're educating our students. The big unknown with merger option five was those one-time costs and what effects it would have had on our fund balance. Let's face it, the state wanted to help us, but if they would have seen that large fund balance, they could have easily just said, hey, you guys have all this money sitting there, pay for those one-time costs yourselves. And then we would have been a merged district with less in the bank than we started with individually, which could have very easily turned into a negative. And like I said, there are some, those were some positives, but the negatives were talked to some of these already. Projected budget shortfall, the same or greater in five years. Projecting it forward, in five years, we were looking at a larger budget gap than we were as UDA alone. So all that meant, we were either going to have to drop courses or increase taxes, which neither one we wanted to do out of this merger. New collective bargaining agreement. Upper Dauphin, we're currently quite happy with our agreement. I think we pay our teachers a fair salary for the area. It's been a good contract. Millersburg CBA, while I'm not saying that it was bad, it was very different. And to bring those two together, almost every individual was going to get a significant raise because nobody going backwards. That was the most likelihood was what was going to happen, and that could have been a very difficult CBA to negotiate. Another one was possible loss of board control. This was something we talked about. We felt we did a good job with our districts over the last year, even years before I've been here. We've maintained our buildings, we've maintained our fund balance, we've kept our tax raises decent. But when you started looking at the possibilities of the way the boards would merge, in a regional model, Millersburg's two large municipalities really played against our multiple small municipalities. And even if we would have went at an at-large model, well, Upper Dauphin does have the larger population, we do not have the larger voting population. If you look in historic elections, we, with a lot of the Amish in our districts and rural areas, we do not have the people vote as what Millersburg and Upper Paxton Township has. So we could have basically been handing over the reins to our own district with this, so to say. There was also the elimination of jobs. Now, not all those jobs would have came out of Upper Dauphin, but we were looking at 40 teachers and staff from our valley, you know, and that's a decent number. None of these other districts are really growing. Nobody's really hiring loads of teachers, so that might have been 40 families moving out of our districts looking for different work somewhere else. And that was on my mind. The increased debt, bringing on the longer, stretching out the amount of our debt and the timeframe of the debt without seeing a direct immediate benefit. You know, if we want to take on more debt and put in a rubber track, we could do that. But taking on more debt and having no physical benefit right off the start was hard to swallow. Getting an additional facility to maintain, I mean, currently, we have two facilities maintained, Millersburg has two facilities maintained. Coming together, it would have been three, and two of those facilities would not have been near capacity. That was going to be a big, big step, go to 50% more facility to maintain. And I was one of the ones that really pushed, looked at going down to two facilities in merger option two. And the one reason I did, I wanted to see that recurring savings that PL never showed us. They kept harping on losing that $250,000 subsidy, but I'm fine losing $250,000 if it saves me 600. That's a better way of looking at it, and that is a longer return on it. The next one was a facility to get rid of. This might sound a little harsh, but in my opinion, we would have demolished Lankerville and sold the lot if we would have merged. Lykan's, Lykan's old high school, Lykan's Elementary, we just this past year forgave the taxes on that building that we evacuated back in 1990, 89. We sold, we sold that building cheap back in the late 80s, early 90s, and it became rundown, falling apart, and we were getting no tax revenue from it, to the point the county took it over and we had to forgive the taxes on it. So we would have been much better 30 years ago to knock that building down, sell the lot, let somebody develop it. So, but that was going to be a one-time cost for us to do that to Lankerville. I mean, we're not in the business of maintaining buildings if we would have been coming here just to have it. The last two, they were minor negatives in my mind. The larger elementary class sizes, our classes are quite small right now in elementary. It would have got bigger though, and we all know the young kids are one of the important steps of developing the students, and bigger class sizes is always a little harder to do that one-on-one with the kids. Sometimes it's a necessary evil, but not always desirable. And the last one, I mean, it's still a negative, it was a minor negative to me, the increased travel time for our junior high students. There's still a lot of districts that are a heck of a lot bigger than we would have been merged. But that even being said, I mean, it would have been longer times for our junior high students traveling. When you added up all those negatives versus the couple positives, we were looking at taking a step back, more like three steps forward and four steps back, netting a step back. And this is in the end, why I voted no to this merger option. I mean, PL was really only projecting 2.5 million in savings out of that combined $37 million budget. Really not that much, and that was based on current collective bargaining agreement. That could have even got smaller. The other thing they were projecting, saving $2.5 million, but they were saying our expenditures were going to grow by 10% and our revenue only by 2.4%. So that was going to disappear quick. When your revenues outpacing your, or your incomes, your incomes being outpaced by your expenditures by three times the rate, it's going to disappear quick. So those were the main reasons that I had to vote no. And please know that I voted no to merger option five. I didn't vote no to working with Millersburg. I think we're neighbors. We already have a couple of things leveraged together, and I think we should continue to work to leverage more and more together. It's just that I could not, in Upper Dauphin's best interests, vote yes for this and take a step backwards with our district. So, thank you. If there's any questions, comments?
I guess I'm last. Why I voted no, very similar to what the other board members stated. It's interesting, I think before I ran for board six years ago, I was speaking with Dave Barter out in the parking lot, and I said, I think we need to merge, we need to merge Northern Dolphin County Schools to offer the best education possible for our students. That's what, that's why I ran for the board. That's my position. So I was very optimistic coming into this potential merger option. And the way I thought about it, or way I could tell the story is watching the cake bake, phase one of the feasibility study, sort of kind of laid out the potential options, laid out some high-level, hierarchical directional items for us to pursue, look at. At that point in time, we chose option five and option two and three as a subset of options to get high-level estimates on. And I approved, I voted yes to go to Phase Two because the cake was still bacon, we didn't have all the ingredients to make an informed decision. We needed to go to Phase Two to get all the information. The first step that we got in Phase Two was the transportation cost. Transportation cost and the, not necessarily cost, how long would these students be in the bus for Millersburg and for Upper Dauphin? Knowing we are getting larger geographically, I accepted it. My child would be on the bus going to Millersburg. Yes, it's only evil to Millersburg versus evil to Lawton, so be it. You know, I'm like, that's a cost or a change to grow. What changed my vote to no was, and you heard my comment, my question, the night of the curriculum presentation. Because when we presented the curriculum presentation, it put out there the curriculum that's being offered, as Mr. Walker alluded to, six to eight potential new high school courses being offered. Yes, the STEM program at the elementary, but by far and large, the high school students reap the most benefit from that curriculum offering, much broader, larger, broader course offering, et cetera. And sustainability. You can't say sustainability because that was my question. Question is, is what happens in year two? Because as you all, all board members, every year, your costs go up and you have to make a decision, and then you have to make a decision, is you have enough revenue to cover it? Do you have increasing wages to increase your local taxes or whatnot? Do you need to increase taxes and what is the state going to fund? So I stopped and paused here at the state funding, what is going to happen with the state? We are back in February, March during the curriculum, if you all, we all were living this together, we're in the middle of a pandemic. No vaccine was offered, we didn't see, we didn't know the light at the end of the tunnel, where it was at, or where it was even coming. And we did know the state was struggling financially. They were squeezing, they were struggling, like how are we going to fund this? Obviously, right now, you saw the state budget, $40 billion budget with increased educational funding. However, a lot of that is propped up by federal, one-time federal funding. That's not sustainable. Reason I bring that up is that state funding brings up the other risk that I'll get to eventually is the one-time funding, a one-time merger cost, which I believe we did float around one of our meetings, the one-time merger cost could be up to $5 million. And that's a substantial, substantial number to ask the state. But going back to the curriculum, my question was, what is sustainability of these programs? Because if you look at it year two, if you don't raise taxes and year two, you keep the same with the cost of salary increases in the CBA, ultimately, we're going to either have to raise taxes for our residents or we're going to have to cut courses. So the question was sustainability. I did not get an answer to that question. And, you know, no fault to administration and no fault to the economy league, but we needed a five-year projection, and what did, what did that look like? Upper Dauphin, Upper Dauphin did that. They did a what-if scenario, what is the five-year, what is the five-year plan? And as Mr. Walker alluded to, we were no further had merged as we were, as we were independent, Upper Dauphin that is. So that brought up, I brought up that question and I didn't get the answer, I didn't get the answer I wanted. Hence, from that point forward, I was struggled, I struggled to get the yes. And I did see the benefits that night, but there's a cost to it, but there's many, many more risk. And I won't go through the numerous, the, at length that Mr. Walker did with the risk. The one-time cost, the sustainability of the programs, and what for our taxpayers, taxpayers, what is sustainability of those taxpayers at what cost? So my vote really got swayed that night on the night of the curriculum. And just, you know, for transparency purposes, that night, we wanted to vote, to be moved, we asked, hey, when are we going to vote? The vote was March 15th. We did not want to prolong that process. Why did we not want to prolong that process? Because you saw the presentation, you saw the teachers by school, by course offering and whatnot, and you could see that we were going to have reduction in staff, which, you know, is pretty straightforward. However, however, the thought process, if this is not viable, let's get to the vote first so we don't lose our good teachers due to, due to the pending merger. Hence, hence moving from that February night to March 15th, the vote, so we can make a decision so our teachers know where we stand. So with that being said, that is why I voted no. I don't believe we have any other Upper Dauphin board members making comment. I'll open the floor to Millersburg board members, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to our second, second agenda item, which is viability of exploring other possible options. Mr. Barter actually alluded to what that is, and for the board members, there is a handout. I will let Mr. Up turn on the projector so the folks here in, can see it. But with that being said, while he pulls that up, my closing comment on the night of the 13th, I have it written here. One, I'd like to continue the sports cooperative and work in that, continue that working relationship. Two, I would love to further explore how the two districts can leverage each other's assets and change the model to enhance the education of our students. And I actually, that changed the model statement I've made multiple times through public meetings. I know the Upper Dauphin public meeting, I looked at it as one plus one as the merged districts as what was proposed in model and option five in the current feasibility study two. One plus one didn't equal two, it came up short, in my mind, in my mind, it came up short. I was hoping to come up with one plus one equal to three. So changing the model, changing the addition to get something better out of merging the two districts. So with that being said, Upper Dauphin administration and board worked together to come up with this change to model. And with that, with that, it is consolidating the high school, as in all options, except for option one, which was stay the same, had Millersburg High School students coming to Upper Dauphin High School. And in this, in this model, the Millersburg High School students would come here to Upper Dauphin, they'd be transported here, and as Dolphin, they'd be transported here, and as, as Steve alluded to, there are other active districts actually doing this and doing it successfully. The closest one is Potsill St. Clair. Now, they may have done it for different reasons, but that model looked like it was rather appealing and working for them. In essence, Millersburg would send their students here, and the benefits from, from doing so as are the same benefits as the merger, and I don't want to speak on your half, but going down to bullet points, number one, solution would eliminate the need to renovate existing Lankerville. That's not for us to decide, but that's for you all to decide on what you do if your high school, if you would actually entertain this high school model. The consolidate high school model, our, our goal is, and this is just preliminary, would be offered the same curriculum that was discussed on that curriculum night. Something very comparable to what was discussed on that curriculum night. Broader curriculum, transportation costs would be the same, transportation times would be the same for the high school students. You would still retain your community-based, Millersburg-based K-8 programs. And please, if you have questions, just give me a nod or something, I'm more than happy to entertain them if I, if I can, and if I know the answers, I will, I will do my best to answer them. High school students with experience enhance course and curriculum offering, as I alluded to, as in phase, is phase, phase two of the study and the curriculum offering. U D A would hire approximately 17, and approximately, please, these are estimates, approximately, approximately 17 teachers from the Millersburg School District to fill out this high school curriculum. We'd use the existing model, which has been proven to work in regional district, i.e. the Potsill-St. Clair model, and I believe just recently, there was two districts out in Pittsburgh that are, that just went this model and are finding success. Two small districts in the city finding success in this shared high school model. The present Millersburg governing school board would remain intact, as would Upper Dolphins. High school students attending Upper Dolphin High School was a solution proposed in option five, as I mentioned earlier. Number eight, timing cost of transferring Millersburg students to high school within a manageable range, as alluded to in the transportation. So no new news here, it'd be the same, same model as, as discussed in the feasibility study, feasibility study. Students already working together at the high school level, as Mr. Walker, Mr. Walker alluded to. It'd be a more cohesive unit, all students being in the same school. I think we'd actually even see increased, increased participation in our athletic programs. School district continues to receive state and federal funding, as is today. So I, I realize these are all benefits, there are some cons. And I, I imagine, you know, from Upper Dolphin, we look at this model as a spin, I don't want to say a spin, but a, another option that was not discussed during our, during our, the feasibility study, which, this is not a merger proposal. This is just simply consolidating our high schools, consolidating our high schools and offering that broad spectrum in a different model. I'll pause there, any questions, comments? So I guess, you know, no comments. Next steps, I know there's a lot of information, a lot of information, it's a new option that's being proposed. I asked Millersburg board members and administration, please discuss this, discuss if this is a viable option. Upper Dolphin is, is more than willing to come to the table and discuss those options. We can discuss financial models to, you know, obviously, the way, the way it works in the, the consolidate high school, Upper Dolphin, Millersburg would pay Upper Dolphin a tuition per student or a fee, whatever we would negotiate, to send your student here. It'd probably leverage the PDE funding model, or, or student, cost per student model, and we can negotiate from there. And we can, we can work on, on, on the model. And where, where you're getting here is you're getting the economies of scale at the high school level, and you get more course offering at the high school level. So next steps, Millersburg board members, I ask you, please discuss this, and if you're willing to entertain this option and take the next step, or if you don't want to take this next, next steps with pursuing this possible option, please communicate to Mr. Shade or myself, or Ms. Bateman, in saying, "Hey, let's pursue this," and then we will engage the necessary parties to pursue the next steps. Fair?
Yeah, I expect, Christ, thank you for listening tonight, and I expect we'll be able to get there.
Before we adjourn, any other comments, questions from either board?
I think the only thing I would say to you, and this was our thought of the model, we're open to ideas. Just don't shut it down entirely. Like I said, we already have things working together with some of the Millersburg students coming to take our water classes to act as an example. There's other opportunities there, we ought to do more together. So, this is our idea, I think we're open to ideas from you guys too, so.
That's fair? Yes, fair. Thank you, Steve. All right, with that being said, could I have a motion to adjourn with no new business to follow? Motion, please. Motion by Brian Henner, second by Dave Barter. All in favor, say aye. Any nays? Folks, thank you very much for coming out this evening, I appreciate your time on this cool summer evening. Please drive home safely, take care.